Did you go to that old, old house like my father one day? Yeah, that white small.
Yeah. Yeah, we had, we had one bathroom for girls and boys. We're way ahead of them today. It was outside. It wasn't quite as convenient, but withstand and do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Yep. You're here for the chiller.
Oh, you're here for public, public discussion.
Technology is great when it works.
Did you put in the request to the office?
I did.
It's called Virgil.
He doesn't like it when I do that.
Those are drive-by tickets.
And he doesn't like it.
I do too.
But he still.
That's why we're here.
But he still responds.
I rarely try to get a vote in when I do on the phone. He says, well, we're gonna help this to deposit. It's all, what's not learned is my computer's down, so I can't do it.
We, we have around about a hundred help desk tickets, so there's no way for us to keep track of all the things we've got in touch without having to, so. But if it's urgent, call, you know.
Yeah.
But my urgency is not one computer, one user. Generally, it's the building is on fire.
Or Tammy's still looking for the board.
Or the recorder isn't working, so.
Priorities.
Still don't see any lights on.
Uh, we're rebooting.
Okay.
This right now, so.
There's again.
Let go boot in a second.
Who?
Yeah, yeah. All right, doesn't it?
Morning, Brian.
Hello.
Morning.
Quiet if you're.
We're trying to get the other owl working.
Andrew Lee.
Andrew Lee.
Yeah, me too.
Well, they were thinking.
Ready for lots of phone calls.
They're probably not there.
Ready for lots of.
They're starting each other.
I gotta talk all over the week.
Mr. Ron, we are ready for public discussion.
Okay, good. Uh, this is reference, uh, your guys' new pay schedule. Uh, I thought that was great that you got the new tires up to snuff a little faster. But, uh, those of us that have been here over two decades kind of got lost in the dust with, uh, longevity paid. Uh, it's happened twenty years, those of us with over two decades. But any chance we could, uh, keep that level going? Not talking major money, but it shows that our loyalty is appreciated.
I think we could have that discussion. Um, it probably won't happen with, you know, the budget already being done and everything for this year, but it could be a discussion for, you know, next budget. Um, with the wages and stuff like that, so.
Just because we're not talking major, major dollars, we're talking ten, ten cents usually.
It stops at twenty.
Yep. It stopped at twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Stops at twenty.
Your opinion to put it on the agenda for next board meeting or forget about it till later?
Um.
I don't know the.
I, I think the issue with changing something like that now is we'd have to do a budget amendment for it. Because, well, our other budgets are already published and stuff. It wouldn't be huge dollars, but it would impact it, so. Any change like that, I don't know that we'd have wiggle room in there, would we?
Um, until somebody would run some numbers, I have no idea.
Yeah, most of the budgets are set pretty close.
Yeah, I mean, it's probably not, I know it's not a huge, huge impact that way, but.
Not as much as last week's that had.
No, but that was huge.
Yeah, but that, we did figure that into the budget. That was.
Probably the time to bring it up is next year before we do the budget.
Uh, yeah, I would say that would be the time to discuss it.
Is that.
Cause I mean, that was.
And that would be across the board for all employees, so.
Yeah.
Does that seem fair to you, Ron?
Not timely to, until we don't get forgotten.
Yep.
I won't forget you.
In. You put it in your memory bank.
Yeah. We'll be bringing it up again.
That gets a little cloudy, right? Those of us that are two decades, it seems to get, you know, it's kind of like riding the bus on the wagon deal.
Really?
But no.
You didn't have to ride a horse to school, did you?
Uh-huh.
You didn't have to ride a horse to school.
No.
No, no.
But it didn't walk. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Ron.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda minutes dated March twenty eighth? Motion by Pla, second by Carter, so. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried unanimous. Everybody had a chance to review claims. Take a minute, because I gotta sign a whole bunch of stuff. Evidently, we did a lot of resolution.
We, uh, fund the libraries once a year if they're yearly.
One question I had on the secondary road department, units six twenty-one, there was decent repair bill on that. I know Doug said some of the tractors were going to John Deere, but do we know which one that was or what was done to it?
Is that sixteen thousand? We're talking about?
Uh.
From pretty bad deer.
Yeah. I'll just shy of that, yeah.
I know there's a lot of. A lot of trucks under at the moment. I don't know.
That was John Deere financially.
Oh, it's.
So that would have been a tractor.
Well. My understanding and talking to someone yesterday, the tractors were ready to go for the year now.
Okay.
Um, so that must have been final maintenance work and parts and whatever needed.
I believe he said one.
Which was kind of the last thing that they did was get all the tractor ready to go.
Yeah, I see certain, tune up, you know, a few different times in here, or at least two different times.
Yeah, well.
Some tune all.
Six twenty-one, six twenty-one would be the two on the same unit. The labor and then the parts and everything.
Right.
But.
Labor mostly.
Yeah, and I believe he had said previously, there was one that needed transmission work or something, but I wasn't sure if we'd heard anything since then.
Yeah.
I didn't catch anything last week, but.
That cost him, wow, that would make sense if it was a transmission.
Do I have a motion to approve or disapprove of the claims?
I'll, I'll move to approve the claims.
Carter made a motion to approve, right, a second?
Second.
Second by Stacker, any more discussion? Being done, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried unanimous. Assuming that you, your motion included the drainage claims that were in here?
Yeah, that's all together.
We got sign all those? Judy?
These are Kasey. These are Kasey. Yeah, these are Kasey cats.
Do we sign all these?
No, no, both are assessment rolls up to county.
That's what I thought. I was hoping you didn't have to. Judy, you are up. Application for natural conservation.
Okay, so, um, every year, what this is, um, or it's actually, it's kind of called the Sue, Sloebill, but it is, um, exemptions for forest cover, which, uh, the requirement is to be a two, two acre minimum. And it can be any kind of trees, so it's like river bottom trees. Um, the other one, get this rivers and streams and open prairie. There's these three different, um, exemptions. They first, uh, file through the soil conservation. Um, they approve them, they get a signature, but then, um, we are an administrative who is kind of a overseer of it, but then it's actually the ultimate of the board supervisors to approve these exemptions. Um, it ended up, I, I believe you got a spreadsheet. It might be kind of hard to read because it's, um, pretty wide, but for the open prairie, there was a total of one hundred ninety-three point four nine acres and forest cover, there's eight hundred and thirty-four point eight nine acres and rivers and streams is two hundred and sixty point ninety. Um, there was just a slight increase, but pretty much it's pretty steady in those same amount of acres. Um, they have to yearly sign up on these, so. We have the letters for you or decide, I do have these letters.
You do have, um, they pay no tax, correct?
They pay no tax on, on those acres.
And if they harvest something off of it?
Right, this is the, this is the program that, that we ran into, that they started harvesting up and, um, we did deny a couple. Um, even before it went out this year, they were denied and those, um, so the two notorious ones, they're not, no longer in here.
No.
We also, um, uh, are not including food plots in their wooded areas. We have now taken those out because they, they were in, there was one that had like open prairie area and then he would till up just a little bit for food plot and we told him that's not going to be allowed, so we took that out. So basically, it's just minus. He still, I feel it qualifies for the open prairie area, but we just, you know, look, just more or less draw that out and exclude it. So we took out all food plots also. We have to pay tax on food plots.
Anybody have any questions for Judy? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve the natural conservation applications, so. Motion by Pla, second by Matt.
So.
Yep, sorry. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried unanimous.
Okay, so these are the letters and you can just sign them at your leisure, and we do have the envelopes back in our office too.
Okay, I'll break it to you when I.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you, Judy. Appreciate the changes. We are to approval of the retainage on the courthouse chiller.
Well, this, they're done with the chiller project. I asked Willie to come in if he had any questions. Um, but they're asking for us to pay the retainage of nineteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-five cents.
Satisfied, Willie?
Yep, it ran yesterday.
Do I have a motion to approve paying out the retainage on the courthouse chiller? Motion by Pla. Second by Stacker, discussion. Everybody comfortable with? Or? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried unanimous. Thanks, Willie.
Thank you, man.
Next, we are up to discussion of approved GPS accounts for board of supervisor. Do I have a motion to that effect?
Make, make a motion. Don't do it.
Do you want to make a motion to decline?
To decline, yes, we don't need it. That's the, that's Doug Mellor's department, not ours. If we have any problems with the roads or any, any road employees, we'll talk to Doug about it.
Do I have a second to that motion? I'll second it so we can have discussion, discussion.
Well, I guess I put this on the agenda and it was specifically in regards to the engineers department. I've had conversations with Doug on numerous occasions about this and he had said he would and the multiple of the most recent conversations, he had said he would need board action to, um, create an account for supervisors. But in my conversations with Todd, and I might even have the email here, otherwise I can find it. See. I do it up here. So he quoted, he quoted the code section and then under all of that, there was a short summary and said, with such a broad definition, arguably GPS, um, software would fit in this section, however, the more interesting issue is that this is not a request from the public, but a member of the board that employs a custodian. Custodian not being an elected official, so it begs the question, who is actually the custodian of these records? And I guess to me, to try and make an informed decision, I don't think you can do that without the actual information. So I think we should have access to any and all information that we have available.
We're not, we're not here to micromanage department heads. That's, we're not charged.
So what, what information do you feel we have received in the boardroom that we got from the GPS? What, what have you been presented with here?
Why do I need to know where, where Doug's employees are at? That's not my job. That's Doug's job. When I have a problem, anytime I have a problem, any questions in the road department, somebody calls me, I call Doug or I go see him. I don't take it upon myself to go out, talk to one of his employees and, and say, what was you doing over here? How come you weren't there? How come you, no, that's Doug's job. It's not my job, it's Doug's.
Who was, who said I was going to do that?
Well, I don't, what are you gonna, what are you gonna do with the information? Why do you need it? If you have a problem with it, go down and talk to Doug.
If I have a problem with it, I will address it with Doug, but I need to have the information to address it.
It's not, it's not, it's not something that we need to, that, that's getting pretty touchy-feely with those employees, but why don't we put one on you? Let's put one on your truck then, so we all know where you're at.
Well, I don't drive a county vehicle. If you want to buy a county vehicle, sure.
Two questions I, I would have would be. Um. The, by the account, uh, approval of account, is that so that a supervisor could have access to it outside of the courthouse? Is that kind of the goal of this motion?
Okay, it, it would, it would be anytime, um.
Yep, and so, so then, I guess I can see the, because you, you know, obviously we all get calls regardless of the road conditions and grading and then whatnot. And, you know, you can say, well, no, he has been down the road. I mean, I can see that end of things at the same time. We should have access to it within the courthouse. I mean, we are his employer, of course. Um. I'm not sure being that, I mean, we do have an engineer informants. If we can't communicate or trust the engineer informants to do their job well, then there's a bigger issue that, you know, that's, that's a whole nother, whole nother issue, if you know what I'm saying. And, and so if, if they're not doing their job, but then, then you pursue other means. But if they are doing their job, then everything should be working smoothly, right? Just from an employer standpoint.
I would agree with that.
So. I'm not sure. I think, like I said, I can see some of the benefit is, so, but when we, when we have a an issue that we'd like to see resolved or, or a concern that we have, yes, we're able to come into here and, and look at the program in the engineer's office addressed last.
Well, I, I haven't even been granted that ability.
I know, I know, but so I, we need to be allowed to do that, however, because it is public record. Any member of the public can walk in and ask for that, but to to be on our living room couch and, you know, or wherever and, and do it, I'm not, uh, not sure, I could see how that could be a tool, not saying any of us five would do that, but a tool in the future that issues could happen as far as micromanaging or, or like I said, I'm not accusing any of us of doing that. I'm just, I'm just concerned about what that would imply down the road.
If somebody calls us about a road issue, our job is to call Doug, go see Doug personally, have a discussion with him. I say, Doug, I got a call from Tom Dickey and he says that you weren't down this road. What can you tell me? And then, then have, then have him give you the information or have him call. A lot of times, you give him the person's name and it's better if Doug calls that person and says, yes, we've been, we've graded that road at such and such a time. But I don't need to sit there at the computer on my couch at nights and watch where all the, all the county employees are, are working. And that's going to be everybody.
That's.
Yeah, yeah, be everyone. And I, that's not, no, we don't need to do that. That's, that's a uh, it's a little invasive in my opinion.
Well, I go back to the point that the five of us have no authority on our own, only if the board decides to do it, all five.
That's right.
And if you have one person or two people looking at, I, I don't have such a big problem with looking at it, but the information's useless because you have no authority to make a decision on it. That's my point. Until you come to the boardroom and address it in the boardroom.
And I.
On the agenda item, we have no authority.
And then I feel like we're superseding the department, Doug. I mean, that's bad.
So what do you, what do you say to, uh, employee who comes with a concern that can't or won't share their name for fear of repercussions or retaliation?
Then he didn't, didn't make a then he never contacted you because if he doesn't get his name.
Anything, anything's done anonymously in this boardroom is thrown in the garbage. It means nothing anonymously.
But I, I'd like to go back to my point of we're having issues employee to employer or department head to employees, whatever, however you want to phrase that. Then there's other issues that need to be addressed first. I don't know if this is a solution to that.
So that's what I'm, I'm thinking it will make it worse is my problem.
I, that's, that's my fear is that it would cause tension and, I mean, not, not saying that tension is okay at times, you know, sometimes we need tension, we need things to be fixed or whatever, but, uh.
And I'm not disagreeing with you, Mr. Stacker, that there isn't problems with every department.
Exactly, exactly.
But the right place is in this room in front of everybody to express an opinion or a problem. You go to a supervisor one-on-one, it never happened.
Nope, or if it's done anonymously, it never happened.
Right.
This is a public place, so we talked about public record. Well, anytime, anything done anonymously is not public.
Well, it's still okay for an employee to reach out. I mean, it's, it's okay for the, whatever.
But if you want to make a decision, it should be in here.
It's for a decision, yes.
I, I'm not saying that any decisions would be made outside of here for this, but if you have information, you could address things in a different way. And have a different reason as to why you're addressing them.
As I was saying, being it's information that is in the courthouse, it is public record. You should be able to come into the office and look at what we would like to address. I mean, that's, I, I'm totally fine with that, you know, I, I, we should be allowed access to that, end of things.
You have access to, you're gonna have access to the twenty-four seven, out of your ear or sitting at home on your couch, you're gonna have access to it.
Are you guys ready for a vote? Anybody gonna change their mind?
Call for the vote.
I, I'll, I'll vote.
Pla.
Can you repeat what the motion is?
Motion by Pla, second by Jerks, to decline the GPS account for board of supervisors.
Yes.
Now.
Yes.
Whafter?
No.
Stacker?
No.
Jerks?
Guess I get to break the tie. I'm gonna say yes to the motion. And if you want to discuss it further, I have no problem with that, but I think the engineer should be available for discussion if you're gonna make a motion like this.
I did not know that he would not be here today.
It's not, not appropriate not to have him in the room when you're discussing something that's in, under his wheelhouse.
He was aware this would be on the agenda.
But he's not here.
Just saying.
These are, but doesn't anything change for us as far as the damage?
The GPS stuff?
Yeah.
No.
Still. All our vehicles.
You get to tracking on it totally.
What's that?
You're, you get to tracking on the ambulance that's come, do you?
I don't.
I don't get, it's not.
It's not.
All.
Okay. But you will.
Yes.
Yeah. We gotta wait till eight thirty.
It's happy that I took, yeah. It's, it's, well, the max tax levy is right there on the, uh. Yeah, this is just the max tax levy. This isn't the budget here.
Okay, okay.
Anybody see the forecast for next week? We're supposed to have, I think, next Tuesday, it's calling for eighty-two degrees. Why didn't see that, I was like, yeah.
That.
I saw that this morning and I was like.
Vote for a vote meeting.
We haven't had a motion yet.
Oh, I make a motion.
Hey, yeah, my phone says eighty-one, so.
We're gonna ruin a perfectly good day coming in here.
And we don't put anything on the agenda.
Too late.
Well, wear our Hawaiian shirts in Georgia.
Eighty-two degrees?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably be forty mile an hour winds though.
That doesn't say much for winds.
My phone says fifteen, so.
Yeah.
Not, nothing, but not bad.
And tomorrow, I think we're supposed to have a high of thirty-five or something like that, and it's supposed to be windy and it's like, it's gonna be quite a change in a week to go from
South.
Thirty-something.
Get all the storms today.
Yeah.
Good, they can keep them.
We had first year on these. Damn it.
Yeah, well, as long as there's no tornado.
It is eight thirty. We will have our public hearing on proposed property tax levy for FY twenty-three, twenty-four.
Good morning, welcome to the public hearing for the.
We gotta open it.
We gotta open it.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
I had that on my thing too, I just got excited.
You just got excited? Do I have a motion to open the public hearing? Mr. Stacker.
Second.
Second by Walter. Do a roll call vote, please.
Class.
Yes.
Now.
Yeah.
Walter.
Yes.
Stacker.
Yes.
Starks.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, now.
Now, go with him.
Okay. So, welcome to the public hearing for Cassoot County Property, proposed max tax levy for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, our taxable valuation for general services for current year twenty-two, twenty-three. One billion, five hundred ninety-two million, three hundred sixty thousand, eight hundred and two thousand. And for our proposed max property tax levy for twenty-three, twenty-four. One billion, six hundred and eighty-five million, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars, nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand, twenty-five dollars. The requested tax dollars for general basic for the current year twenty-two, twenty-three. Five million, five hundred seventy-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars. The budget year proposed maximum property tax for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Five million, nine hundred thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars. General supplemental, the current year, two million, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars. The proposed max property tax levy for twenty-three, twenty-four. Two million, two hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars. So requested tax dollars for general services total, current fiscal year, seven million, eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. The proposed maximum property tax for twenty-three, twenty-four. Eight million, one hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars. Which is a proposed percentage change of three point five one percent. The estimated tax rate for general services for the current fiscal year, four point nine four zero six two. And the. Uh, proposed maximum property tax for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Four point eight three zero zero zero. The taxable valuations for rural services for the current fiscal year. One billion, two hundred and seven million, nine hundred and three dollars, nine hundred and three thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars. For proposed maximum property tax levy for twenty-three, twenty-four. One billion, two hundred and ninety million, one hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars. The requested tax dollars for rural basic for the current fiscal year. Two million, one hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars. For, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four. Two million, thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars. For rural services total, of for this current fiscal year, two million, one hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars. For fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Two million, thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars, which is a decrease of three point five six percent. The estimated tax rate for rural services is one point seven four nine eight eight for our current fiscal year. And for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, one point five eight zero 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 percent. The increases in the budget are due to salary increases, roads and transportation and capital projects. As well as valuation increases. The max tax levy is available online at cassootcounty dot Iowa dot gov. The above tax rates do not include county voted levy levies, mental health and disability service levy, debt service levy, and the rates of us. Other local jurisdictions. That is all the information on the.
Have any comments on the proposed levy? For property taxes? Seeing none, we close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by class, second by Carter. Roll call vote, please.
Class.
Yes.
Now.
Yes.
Walter.
Yes.
Stacker.
Yes.
Starks.
Yes. Our next thing is approved resolution four, four, twenty-three oh one, which is a resolution approving the maximum property tax dollars for FY twenty-three, twenty-four. That we just heard of. Anybody have any questions, or otherwise I entertain a motion? To approve.
I'd make a motion to approve resolution.
Mr. Sacker makes a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Walter. Any discussion? Any discussion from the public? Seeing none, please do a roll call vote.
Class.
Yes.
Now.
Yes.
Walter.
Yes.
Second.
Yes.
Starks.
Yes.
I know, it's the latest you're probably ever seeing.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
Yeah, most state.
Well, usually it's March.
Yeah, yeah, cuz, cuz it was extended, so.
Next thing on our agenda is set date and time for FY twenty-three, twenty-four budget hearing, and it is on April twenty-fifth at eight thirty this year. Do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Carter.
Second.
Second by Stacker, any discussion on it? Hearing none, do a roll call vote, please.
Class.
Yes.
Now.
Yes.
Walter.
Yes.
Stackers.
Yes.
Starks.
Yes. Phil, you are up. We are up to full-time EMS staff employee benefits and hiring process of current staff.
Yeah, thank you guys.
The first one on the agenda is the EMS staff benefits and hiring process for current staff. Um, kinda had a brief conversation on this last weekend. My monthly update, but. Put on the agenda this week, we do have Melissa and Donna here too, so we have questions for them, I don't. Say something correctly, they hear correctly. The, the big thing we're looking at is, you know, since the staff was hired. By me and the city, you know, for our business agreement, uh, to be part of the system, since the system started July first, twenty twenty. Up to honor those higher dates back to that date, uh, nothing prior to that day, just back to the day system began. One reason is, they truly work through the system. You know, they worked at both locations, they didn't work just in the vault, that they paid. Their, their payroll came from ways put in by Cassoot County for salaries. For the staff. We knew this transition was coming when we hired these people, um, so they were told upfront that I've hired that this transition will be happening, so. That's why I'm asking you to go back to that date, Melissa did make a phone call on that day, uh, to make sure it was okay to do that. And we're okay to honor their hire date. Correct.
Correct.
You, you called the auditor?
I found my call.
Payroll attorney, okay. Just so we know who, who you call.
So Melissa did call that to make sure if things okay doing that, so she, and she also did that, so about carrying over the vacation time. Um, for our handbook, it says they're allowed to carry over forty hours of vacation time. If we honor that vacation time carryover, we would be reimbursed for that expense from the city of Elgona. Uh, because they're gonna have the option, the employees will have the option to either cash out the vacation time they have. Or carry over, if we allow it to carry over up to that forty hours, so either way, the city's gonna have to pay that expense either to the employee. Or to us. Um, so Melissa did check on that, to make sure that was okay. And, and that was okay. Um, also looking at, you know, per the handbook, the comp time and the sick time, that, those two items, Melissa has not. Asked the question.
She did ask the question, not the comp.
Okay.
She has checked with the payroll attorney on the sick leave.
So as far as the. As far as the comp time goes, I mean, we can either honor that or not, uh, or they can get paid out for it. If we do honor that up to what the handbook allows, the city of Elgona will, will reimburse us for that, because that's a true expense to them. Regardless of they pay us or pay the employee on that one as well.
Be cleaner if they paid him out.
To me, to the employee directly.
Yeah.
And carry over the vacation.
Right.
So when they start. Um. Their first paycheck will be in July twentieth. They'll begin employment on July first. So their, their first paycheck is gonna be a half a paycheck, so we have the fourteen days of the first month. So they're gonna have to cash out some of that anyway, to make sure they have a full paycheck that first month. Otherwise, they will get a full paycheck until the twentieth of August. So I mean, we could work around that to which way it works best that they carry over. The only reason I included comp time is some of the people that began. I have three that began July first of this year, so they won't get any vacation time accrued until July first, though. Of next year, so if they carried, you know, twenty hours of comp time, at least they'd have a little time off those first six months. After they make ban here, that's the only reason I looked at doing that as well. The ones that have both vacation time and comp time is probably not as a big a deal, except for those three new people that don't have any vacation time accrued yet.
Sick leave, the city had no problem with the forty-four, twenty-five, or did you ask them yet?
I have not.
Melissa did check with the attorney, Melissa, I'll let you tell him what the attorney said about sick leave.
Okay, he just, um, in a word, the sick leave, they accrued sick leave, but he recommended cautions.
So we would.
Would we have to be reimbursed for that, or did he comment?
I'm supposed to call him if there's.
Wouldn't it be better if the city paid or did what they would and made it complete, and they'd come here and get new sick leave, I think it'd be.
But they won't pay them out for their sick leave that they have. Just like us, if they quit here, we would not pay them out for their sick leave, so sick leave is not a reimbursable benefit to employee, only if they use it.
Uh, you're correct. I think there might be an issue with taking sick leave from a different employee and carrying it over to here.
You're crossing over different.
Yes, he said it was, uh, potentially taking over a large liability.
Yeah.
So those numbers, that forty-four point five percent, that have, that's the information I got from Doug.
Yeah.
Um, after the last meeting with Doug, I got that, that's the percentage that he had figured, so that's where that number came from. So they, as it stands today, the, um. The cost, if that forty-four point five percent holds true, is like a seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars.
I'd kinda like a really good opinion on that sick leave before we make a decision on that.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that.
I don't wanna. Cross the line anywhere. Do we want to call? Well, can you get an opinion, Melissa, in writing?
Uh, he sent an email.
He is sending?
He did, he did, he did say what I just wrote, he recommended, if you want to figure that.
If you could bring that up, that might be a good idea.
I, I kinda like something in writing.
Part of the, I don't know, where you're selling, bitch. Is he up to speed on the business agreement we had in place with Elgona?
No, I, I did, I did look forward after we spoke.
And I don't believe, since there's a, any part of the business agree that. Sent those out, you know, any of the, just that's better, that's preferred to city level in the handbook, it doesn't specify.
I don't know if we had that.
Individual. Benefit as far as sick time, comp time. Just says per city policy, I'm sure it does.
The city give you any direction on what they?
I guess, at the, at the last EMS board meeting, Jacob was. Very much against the city paying for sick time in.
What if our comp time, would he have?
They, no, vacation and comp time, they, they would pay out either way, whether it's to us or the employees, so that should not be an issue. Um, sick time will be the issue, though. And we had a lengthy discussion about that. But I, I don't know if the council has an opinion or not, but Jacob definitely was not supportive of it.
In my. Like, just from conversations I have, I would suspect that will, will. Fast enough, I don't think the council will change from what Jacob recommends.
The, the tough part is, we, I mean. I wa- I'm conscious of how this would affect the employees, but. We've also gotta look at it on a broader picture of how it affects the county and any other staff that we hire. In the future too, so.
Well, let's put Donna on the spot, and she's here, had, I don't remember ever transferring sick leave in from an individual. Into the county.
I don't know how.
Even when we. Well, we hired from the state already, but they didn't carry their sick leave in.
No, that's a mean.
Uh, we've never done it, is my point.
And we've had many discussions that that's not a compensatable benefit.
Right.
We haven't chose to do that here, so then he took it back in. Interesting.
Yeah. The only thing I think we could maybe have as justification would be the business agreement, but if our attorney hasn't seen that, I don't. I would not be comfortable going forward with transferring sick leave across, um. In any form until we have a solid opinion from him on that. Cause that email was not reassuring. The business agreement would be the only potential, I think, if, if it, if there's a documented relationship in that way. I'd be able to justify it on.
Business agreement, this is gonna stay, stay, you know, if they're. Hired in collaboration between us and the, and the city and. Paints through the city, but I mean.
But, but the agreement in itself would define that relationship, so you might be able to justify it on that grounds, but. Um. I wouldn't know until he would have an opinion on that.
I'll, I'll go back to all the meetings we had and, and what we presented to the voters, and we never presented that we would. Do anything like this. Which. Whether it's right or wrong, I'm not. It's.
I mean, there's.
Muddies of water.
Mm-hmm.
So what, what is it, what do we do with the vacation time that they have with the city come over here?
So if we approve to allow that up to the forty hours per the handbook, the city would reimburse those for those. For that, so it wouldn't be an expense, it would not be an expense for the county to, to honor that.
Yeah.
And, and that's what I told the attorney as well.
Yeah. So that it's, it's basically taking it from one hand to the other hand, but it's not an expense to the new system, to, or to the county. Taxpayers in that regard.
Well, the thing is, vacation time's a cash expense, sick leave is not, and that's where we're on the line.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean. Yeah, we. Sick time is a, is a, is a sure, basically insurance. Not paid, it's not, be paid out, but if we're honoring, if, if they are coming in with. Two or three days of vacation, right, I mean, they can't use that to, if they have to be gone for ten or two.
Your concern is the people that have been employed for, you know, two, three years and have sick time built up of something would happen. They would have nothing. So that's that's my concern with it.
Yeah, I agree with you, but I but I don't wanna do anything that's not culture.
No, I.
That's my problem.
The other argument you could make is, yeah, you did talk to them when they were hired on that this. Change was going to be happening. And I mean, they gotta understand that there's going to be some. Give and take there a little bit when we're when we're changing over to. What the.
Uh, there's there is some compensation for it, you know, coming into an organization that's got all three kinds of health insurance. So.
Well, their job was suspected. Subject to. This the whims of Elgona until the county took it over.
Ways, there is some compensation.
There's there's a lot of benefit here to the employees to work for the county instead of the city.
Yeah.
They have to realize that. As far as that stable employment, this is.
More more than just pay.
Yeah.
On top of that, too.
So what do you wanna do, guys?
So is their pay gonna be the same? So that way the vacation reimbursement we get from the city. Matches what we're actually gonna pay. You know, so the revenue matches the expense. You know, their their vacation pay.
In in that case, it might be better to. Have the city pay them out on it at their current rate. Because it would. Muddy the waters less. Feature.
Well, if if they're gonna make more here, then when we pay in the vacation, it's gonna be more than the revenue that the city not going to pay.
Yeah.
Um, I I mean, I don't care. I'm just wondering is I don't know what their wages are, so I.
It's a lot cleaner if we do it the way you want to do it. The biggest thing is the date of hire. I don't want them all taking all the vacation on December. And.
To focus.
Yeah. And with 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 that being okay, I'm I'm perfectly comfortable with hi honoring their hire date up to. Seven one of twenty twenty. I'm okay with that.
Are you making a motion?
Um, yes, I would make motion for that, that like that first paragraph. Well.
The first sentence beside stopping at seven one twenty twenty.
Yeah, let's do that just for one to start.
Okay.
So you're gonna do it in all separate motions?
Yeah, probably because. Of the discussions we've had, probably would be better to do it item by item.
Okay.
Okay.
So that would just be for their higher date.
I I will second your motion on the higher date. Sticker. Jars. We have a motion and a second on the floor. And it would be to set the higher date for seven one twenty twenty.
Up to.
Up to.
Yeah, yeah.
The motion is to approve hiring of current EMS staff honoring their higher date for the Keith County EMS system back to seven one twenty.
Yeah.
Yes.
Everybody understand the motion?
I still got a question, Phil. So so they're they all, they're not, it's not gonna be seven one.
Yeah.
In the system. Each person's gonna have a different higher date depending on when they were hired to sit.
It'll it'll go back that far.
It's like being hired prior to seven one twenty twenty. Brian's wife was hired a couple of months prior to that.
Okay.
He called the batch, so.
Okay, okay. I just need to know with everything.
When the system.
I just wanted to clear that. I wasn't putting everybody a seven one in to on there.
It's it's their current date now, right?
I guess. Or coming in when they approach that anniversary date.
We haven't got.
We haven't got that that far yet.
No, that's that's all included with the higher date, right? That's that would follow our policy based on the higher date. Yeah, yes.
So then if someone's been there two years come August, then we're gonna give them two weeks vacation come August.
Yes.
Yeah, you're good with what we got so far, Melissa?
Yeah, I'm I'm following.
Okay. Have motion and second on the floor. Any more discussion? Hearing done. Let's, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Next, we need something on vacation hours.
I would make a motion that we allow employees, well. I guess for discussion first, um. What do you guys think as far as the rate? Do we need to have discussions with the city of Elgona, whether it's the current rate? Or the new rate they're coming in? Before we act on this.
It would be good to confirm it.
Or what what rate do you? Do you have any idea, Phil, as far as which rate?
Those are these seven one rate, which would be their rate of hire here.
Their rate of hire.
Because they would be getting a raise if they stayed with City of Elgona, that would be effective seven one as well. So.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So the revenue from the city is gonna be at that new rate?
It should match the new rate then, right?
Right.
You open that in the motion and.
Okay.
If they don't wanna allow it, then.
Then we'd have to go back to the drawing board.
Check with them before you make the motion?
No, we'll make the motion and then give it to them. And if they don't accept it, we'll have to redo it.
So I I'd make the motion to allow employees to carry over up to forty hours of vacation. To be reimbursed by the city of Elgona. Based on their. Salary that's offered. For seven one twenty twenty-three start date.
Yes. She's.
Yep, give her a second to write.
You do not need to repeat it?
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Allow employees to carry over up to forty hours of vacation to be reimbursed by the city of Elgona at the rate of higher on July first twenty twenty-three.
Does everybody understand the motion? I have a second. I'm ready to do it second.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, okay.
Who who made that motion?
I did.
Jerk second, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Does everybody understand the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Now we're up to the fifty-six hours of comp time.
Was this one that we had not checked on? Yet. With the attorney.
Didn't ask, but. I mean, if if the city's gonna reimburse us like the vacation, he would say it's okay, but I'm not sure, but but.
Well, I did let them carry over the comp time. Then if we don't let the sick leave carry over, it's not quite as bad.
That's a concern to the jury. You wanna cap it fifty-six hours to bringing in fifty-six hours isn't so much. It's.
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be a limit.
Like carry you carry all pretty in the handbook. Yeah, the handbook.
For the handbook.
Yeah.
So that doesn't necessarily mean that they'll bring in fifty-six hours, but they'd be at the cap.
It's up to.
Up to.
Yep.
I would make the motion to allow them to take over fifty-six hours as a cap on their constant time.
Up to.
Up to.
Yeah.
Sorry. And to invert that, and the city's gonna reimburse us.
Do you wanna specify the same rate like we did for seven one?
Yeah.
On the previous.
Rate of seven one. Three.
I'll second that.
I don't think anyone compared to thirty-six. So just put thirty-six as last one that has looks.
Right. Are you kind of that's, cause you have to have to scan.
Right.
Do you know right now, Phil, what they have to carry over? Any clue?
Which which.
I'm done.
So with the city, they were allowed to carry up to eighty hours.
Oh.
Um, I've one at seventy-two, one at fifteen, one at fifty-nine, one sixty-three, one at twenty-two, and one at one.
So one of them's gonna get dinged.
Well, they'll probably just.
Save them out.
The three, the three new ones, you know, don't have a lot built up yet.
The the one that's got quite a bit, he can use it out before he transfers.
Or they'll pay out.
They'll pay it out.
Yeah.
Cause they're gonna be short, they're gonna be short that first paycheck. So they need to have something in there. To to offset that short paycheck.
Okay.
Well, it'll it'll be a different schedule. They won't really be short, but it'll be a different timing.
Right.
Yeah.
They won't get their first full paycheck until August, August twenty.
Yeah.
Yes.
Does everybody understand the motion?
Is this motion two-part, well, up to fifty-six, count certain time we were reimbursed by City of Elgona at the rate of higher on seven one twenty-three? And be able to carry over fifty-six hours of content per year? Is that what the motion is? Or is it just pay?
It's just to carry over, right?
Just to carry over.
So it's not getting.
Cause they they would, no. They would, they would follow the handbook after that.
After they're out.
Right, but it's not in the handbook. So we have to make a motion to put it in the handbook. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, per per handbook, you want in there?
The the handbook has fifty-six.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So they've gotta add that.
That that's the only bad.
So we gotta put it in the handbook for EMS. We have fifty-six.
Okay.
Yeah, it, I believe others, there's like four, three other.
Done to make sure that I get in there, right?
Talked about trying to put it all into one, but we have differences. So we need to separate that out.
Leave it in there that it will be put in the handbook. The motion.
We have a couple of our things. We have to put it to the inputs, EMS was sitting too, so.
And then Cam, the city's gonna reimburse for that as well.
At the at the new rate.
Yeah.
For seven one.
Yeah.
They will.
Do you want me to repeat the motion?
Oh, we're doing good. Everybody understand the motion?
Yeah, that's fine.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. We need a break. Oh, good. So Phil, where are we at now?
Well, Todd, you want me to talk to Todd then on that other one, or are you looking for?
Sick leave?
Yeah, on on the sick leave, I would say we need to talk to our payroll attorney. Not Todd, but our payroll attorney with Melissa, um. And get some more information on that before. We act on it, in my opinion, um. And then.
What do you want to know? What what do you want to say?
I don't know if it's culture to carry over sick leave from one business to another.
The only thing I think would maybe be information that he doesn't have already would be the business agreement. So.
But yes, I need the boardroom.
Yes. Phil, can you?
I I can look it up or find it.
I'd say let's just find it after the meeting.
Okay.
But, um. Let's get that to him and then have him review that to see if that changed. At all. Because I can. Completely follow his justification if you're taking him from any random business or any other employment they're coming from. This one, this topic and situation specifically, we have, uh. Out of the ordinary agreement, so.
Well, we have no idea if this even legal to do.
Well, yeah, so he should, he should be the one to look into that.
Okay. I will get with Melissa, get her the information she needs and.
Cause I've never seen it done before, so I'm I I'm having a little issue with it, so.
Tammy, should we have a motion to table that until we have more information or? That's why I would make that motion to table the decision on sick leave. Until we get more information from our payroll attorney.
Second to that motion.
You don't have to make the motion. You just have to say no action taken.
That's true. We don't have to, but I think it would be better for. Documentation and the process of it, just to show what we're doing.
I'll second the motion. I have a motion and a second on the floor. Everybody understand the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Phil, do you need anything on the, um, benefits? You got employee benefits will begin per the handbook following the start.
I used to make that comment. I don't think there's any, there needs to be no hope about that.
That's that is, yeah.
It should be. I just wanted to clarify that.
I'm acknowledged.
Yeah, the the health insurance portion, we know, doesn't start for thirty days after their start date. Uh, the city's insurance will cover for the month of July, so we're covered there for the staff. Uh, it's carried, continue with the city's June of July, that the counters will start August first. And then the rest of like life, Melissa said, it's a six-month waiting period on life insurance. So we'll follow the the handbook on on those start dates. Everything is in the handbook for that. But we should be fine because we coordinated with city on when theirs will stop and start here.
Yeah. So are you looking for anything else for action from us today?
Um, the second thing I was the job description that got postings.
Yeah, I for that.
We are up to EMS full-time staff job description and job posting. Phil, what have you got for us?
I am doing the the, there's two job descriptions, uh, one for the paramedic and one for the EMT level. And also a copy of the, uh, posting to most of the physicians. Uh, those have been taken to the advisory council for review. Just put a bunch of you guys for review and a big motion to move forward on. Two items.
So everybody's gonna apply again?
Correct. What follows. Labor laws and fire, you know, as far as posting them and waiting for ten days and. Rehire the current staff and then any additional staff may apply, we can look at them as well.
You got any problem, anything in here, Melissa, that you have a problem?
Insurance was done.
I can. I didn't look at it, sorry.
We have one thing on the, uh. Salary.
Okay.
It has a range and.
Yeah, and I I'll talk with Phil after that, but I think for the posting aspect of it, it would. It would be okay for now. Um, we'll have to set a specific salary, but.
We need to make sure that it it's like our wage schedule for the rest of the county to make sure that they're all at the same rate per job title.
Yep.
With the only difference being talked about.
Hmm. And I told Phil I would talk with him after the meeting on that.
We can review this salary if there's any adjustments I know.
And we can, we'll have to set that at a later date.
What's that?
The, we'll have to set the salary. For these positions.
There'll be hourly employees are not exempt.
That's fine, but their weight.
No, I'll be at the same wage scale unless except for longevity.
Yeah.
But there'll be different classifications.
Right.
Right.
But yeah, classification.
Yeah, just paramedic and EMT and.
So you wanna leave that out of the motion?
I don't think we need to adjust anything for the posting. Um, we will need to come back and have action to set their. Start starting salary for those positions, but I don't think we need to affect the posting would be.
And the starting, the starting wages will not be. Offered until we offer them appointment after we post, after doing interviews that we actually offer the positions at that time will offer.
But we'll, yeah, we'll have to make that decision as far as what that starting salary is and but.
I got no problem with the job posting as it's presented on our iPad. Does anybody? I would entertain a motion to approve the job posting. For EMS full-time staff.
I'd make that motion.
Second.
I'll second. I'll second.
Job. Or D check. Any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for your patience.
Yeah.
Doug Crouch is here for.
I will, we're gonna take about a five-minute break.
Okay.
Yeah.
Seven three.
Yeah.
Awesome.
I'm. Okay.
Hey, what, hey, hey, I see you call. Uh, yeah, no, I was super ready to meet you here if we're on break, so. Oh, he's out there, okay. Oh, okay, okay. Hey, good morning. No, don't worry, I just, I forgot to sign before we dug in the mail, so uh. So that's kind of important, so uh. So I'll, I'll just tell the post office here then. To do not take it and we'll hold it mailed at home. Yeah, I know, we can obviously know not not to take it, so. So, all good. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Back right now.
Yeah, oh, I got it. You do. Phone mail, never sign it. Realize that after a second. You got a phone book in your desk, right? Do you?
I just want to check up.
Sorry, do you?
What's that?
Do you have a phone book in your desk?
No.
Okay, I'll see if I can find it.
Who are you trying to look for?
What's that? I just figured I'll call.
Google. Google it.
There we go. Perfect, I just want to check that way. Perfect. See ya.
I don't even know where to find a phone book in, nor.
I think they still come in the mail.
Yeah, I don't know, but I just.
Think I got one sitting on my table at home. Never opened it.
Yeah. I just looked it up on the computer.
Parked all of this, otherwise.
Yeah, I'll just step upstairs. I think I found it here.
What you looking for?
Hold that.
Oh, we got this downstairs, most of this is.
Do you have?
Well, no, on that road closure.
Hmm, yeah, they probably appreciate that.
So they know to reroute.
Uh, pretty close to another road.
Yeah, yeah. Tile.
Oh, I see the big.
Is that, is that fixed yet, or what?
It's like a thirty. Thirty-two inch tile comes in from the west and then reduces down to twenty-four.
In the road?
It gets on the east side where it reduces. Think it could be on the west, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Where, where the reduction happens, if you look at the tile maps. It shows that reduction, it's twenty-four inch, starting at the outlet. Coming up to somewhere around the road, there's an eight inch that ties in on the east side. For sure, but then somewhere in there is a transition up to a thirty. Two, it's one time, I'm sure. So I don't know if that's what's caused the blowout.
Yeah, it's a strange.
It does.
Supposed to, isn't it?
Fair.
We got fifty percent chance.
Are you looking for the road that was closed?
No, I'm. I don't remember where I was at that day. There's a big tile hole on B fourteen.
B fourteen?
Yeah, I'll stop down and tell you exactly, it's by Larry Nelson's place. She's sucking in dirt.
Um, we had one turned in. If also, or bedcom, cloud everything in.
I got three spots that have been fixed yet, and I think same thing.
Stop down. And we'll guess, check and see if it goes.
Yeah.
Assistant.
But I just drove by that one by Larry Nelson's, and that looks like the big hole that should be fixed.
Yeah, that's.
We don't want it to wash the blacktop out.
No.
Anybody?
We don't want them in right away.
No.
Very.
I can't figure why that bridge up there by Tom and Tom's is got rough this year going over the blacktop. Uh, where the dam is.
Slough.
The north side of the slough, yeah. It'd be that first blacktop north Bancroft.
Yeah, yeah, I know, bridge, I don't.
It's a good banger now.
Cause you come down the hill there east.
Well, both directions.
Well, but it flattens out before it goes back up to the west.
Yeah.
Cause it's on both sides.
No, it's more on the the west side.
The southbound, south lane?
Yeah.
For eastbound.
That's never been that rough before.
I don't, I don't, I don't remember having to get any, because with that, what's right, on that side.
Um, you're gonna have to jump ahead because here, they come here on the last phase of the nine twenty.
They are on the line?
Oh, yeah, it's nine twelve. Okay.
Hmm, you wanna call?
Oh, you got dialed in nine to get out, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, Doug, we gotta do a teleconference.
Please enter your participant or moderator code, followed by the pound key. Please say your name, followed by the pound key.
Kassuth County.
But over the last several years, county.
Hello, everyone. We got the, we got the full board and our auditor and drainage clerk here. And couple in the public as well.
Nice of you to join.
We're just. Nice to hear your voice, too.
What people are.
So we're on, we're on DD forty-nine, or not forty, excuse me, yeah, forty-nine dash seventy-nine right now, so.
So as far as Hancock County and Winnebago County is concerned for this joint DD forty-nine seventy-nine. Are there any questions? Does that make sense?
Guys, have any questions about this? All right.
Hey, I muted it, so I think we can talk with all the.
Right, so.
You wanna do?
Then we'll take a vote to.
Insurance.
The updated reclassification report for DD, are you willing to add motion then? I can, I'll make that my motion to approve the updated reclassification reports for DD forty-nine seventy-nine. All. Gary, Gary, yeah. Okay, I'm motion for general, then. Second, Gary. Almost locked in the clock there for a second. Just gonna say clock, I mean, so I got it right now.
Got it.
But uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed? Passes.
When will we have to have the public hearing then?
May fifteenth, at May fifteenth.
Okay, then we'll take a vote to uh. Make a motion to have the public hearing for joint DD forty-nine seventy-nine on May sixteenth at nine fifteen. All in favor, say aye. Aye, a second.
Second.
Second, oh, excuse me, yeah, staggered my rate on some. For a second there, I thought I had full authority, but uh, I forgot.
Come on, Joe.
Yes, yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, all right, and we'll move on to number ten. Nine twenty AM, consider for approval, updated reclassification report for joint DD sixty-eight one thirty-six, main ditch and lap two ditch. And set the public hearing date.
And I, I think since Kassuth County wasn't on the line for a lot of what I said initially, I'll just kinda go over that again real quick. Uh, but just. Just so you guys know kind of the backdrop of this, and Rick, Rick Hopper is.
How are you doing? Excuse me, go ahead.
Oh, you're fine. Um, Rick, Rick Hopper's the engineer for this, but he's, he's out lately. He had a knee replacement surgery that he's recovering from, from. I, I offered to call in and answer any questions about this, but basically. This is to correct an issue with the county secondary roads classification. Um, that was discovered as part of several reclassifications that were done. Um, in recent years that involved land. Well, that involves districts that have land um in city limits. Uh, the procedure that was used kind of inadvertently resulted in high, high classification, high, which would then result in high assessments. For county secondary roads, too high, to the point where it's not, not equitable. And so this essentially is to fix, to fix that, uh, it's not really to change any of the other classifications, but you had to, to do that, you had to open up the whole thing. Um, so these reports in essence are to. Modify the county secondary roads. Um, classifications for the schedules that involve land within city limits.
Is that, is that for both counties or just for Winnebago secondary roads?
Well, that's for both counties, so um, joint eighty sixty-eight one thirty-six, there's main, the, the main ditch and lateral two ditch. Um. Are the sched, are the two schedules that involve lands within city limits, and let me just see here. Uh, let me pull that up real quick, I don't have that report in front of me. Actually, I do. Um. Yeah, for both those schedules, there, the Kassuth County Secondary Roads classifications are being modified.
Okay, just wanted to double check that.
Yeah, just, just for example, like. Kassuth County, the, the benefit unit is going down by, like, it's gonna be less than half of what it was. But that's, that's kind of the backdrop to this, and we're doing this management with you with the procedures that we had in place, and we're, I mean, we're doing it at no charge to the drainage district, of course. And, and for Kassuth County's information, I mean, Winnebago knows this already, but. We've, we've updated our procedures and methodology, and that, this is not gonna be a recurring issue into the future. But it basically is taken care of.
Sounds good, um, Winnebago County, do you have a full board, just for our auditors' notes?
Yes, we're all here.
Perfect, thanks. Any questions over here?
No, as long as they're lead county, they should make the motion.
Winnebago, we'll leave it up to you to. Run the show. We're good on this.
Someone's supposed to say something here quick, Bertie.
If we do the public hearing on the sixteenth at nine twenty-five, that way it's just one motion to approve the report and set the public hearing.
Okay.
If we can do that.
At nine twenty-five, is it?
Yes, please.
I'll make the motion to approve the updated reclassification reports for joint DD sixty-eight one thirty-six, main ditch and lap two ditch. And set the public hearing date for five sixteen at nine twenty-five.
I will second that.
Who made that?
Bill Danz, yeah.
I'll take it.
Yep.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
On this side?
Oops, excuse me.
Go, go ahead.
Roger.
We're, we're just, we're just uh taking the roll. We're all in favor on this side.
All right. All in favor here?
Aye.
We're all in favor here.
Motion carried unanimous, both sides.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I didn't hear any, yep. Didn't hear any opposition.
Yeah, 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 yes.
All right, nine twenty-five AM, consider for approval, updated reclassification reports for DD three, main ditch and lap eight, and set public hearing date, I assume you're gonna set the public hearing.
You guys are, you guys are done with us, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Have a good one, we'll.
Thank you for your support.
Yep, me too.
Yeah.
Okay, you want me to go back and let Doug finish the? I don't know where I'm at right now.
Financial recall.
Yeah.
Yeah, financial assurance.
There we are.
And in looking at, looking at that, there's no.
You are, I did.
Very good.
Good God. Better information of Doug, we'll take all that.
We had it in our folder.
And in email, yep.
You have anything to add to what we've had in our folder, Doug?
I do not.
Do I have a motion to approve the financial assurance report to the land too?
I'll second.
Laugh and Stecker. Two roll call vote.
Black.
Yes.
Nass.
Yes.
Whacktor.
Yes.
Second.
Yes.
Jack.
Yes. Next thing on the agenda, Doug, you're still here, so you can, you can tell us if we're wrong. Resolution of the current local option sales tax and opposing tax distribution language in sentence file five five zero. Does everybody had a chance to read it? I oppose it, it's gonna take lost tax away from our road department.
County has a whole, yeah.
Yep, yep. Do I have a motion to? Yes.
The resolution is zero four zero four twenty-three oh two.
Do I have a motion to approve a resolution number oh four oh four twenty-three oh two, to file our opposition to changing the sales tax distribution language?
Same.
Opened by Whacktor, second by Carter also. Any discussion?
The only thing I had kinda thought about a little bit as I read this was in the therefore paragraph, that's board supervisors unanimously supports the I-Will Trust Fund. Um, that's in the constitution and stuff, so do we need to address that, or?
This is a resolution which holds, um, that that holds from, um, other, another county or.
Oh yeah, I saw that in the email, so.
Said another county engineer, but these are. But yeah, these are.
Spokesperson?
Spokesperson. Or lobbyist. Some of that.
I, I was dying with it.
I, I'm not opposed to it, I just didn't know if we needed to have that tied in or not, so.
So I have a motion by Whacktor and second by Carter. And the resolution number is four four twenty-three oh two, and I would call for a roll call vote.
Black.
Yes.
Nass.
Yes.
Whacktor.
Yes.
Second.
Yes.
Jack.
Yes.
Our shade county has their change of phones.
Oops, you can see the email. While we're signing, do you got anything you wanna talk about in a right of way?
We do have, last D, was a, tile crossing.
Ready?
We're migrating.
Yes.
That you guys think that, you think, you didn't think that was gonna be a problem, so Doug, yes, recommended approval on that.
We'll get Jack a minute to sign that. Everybody had a chance to look at your folder with the reading tile crossing. Anybody have any issues with it? Carter, it's bound yours.
Make the motion to approve it.
Thank you.
Carter makes the motion to approve. Last seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimous. Get caught up. Any other construction in the right of way? Any discussion with the engineer, any, any projects, updates, bridges or anything?
You just saw that top road's closed up there around your three minutes.
Yep.
Monkey yesterday, and I said, it's gonna be a little while if your contractor do that, but.
It's gonna be deep.
Uh, our foreman said it was about five foot deep when you folded in that body, like I said, from the bottom of the ditch, so it's, yeah, it's fairly deep, that is large. It's thirty inch. It, it depends on where that tile comes through the road with twenty-four, thirty inch according to tile. So that connection's right there someplace.
Yeah.
Anybody got any questions for Doug? We let you off pretty easy.
I need to be here on the day that you have a lot. Can you sign that, please, let us, the waste management.
Well, that you still have to.
Yeah, I'll get the date, and then that's the motion before the tile crossing.
Thanks Doug.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Have a good day.
You too.
See you then. We are out to discussion with county auditor.
Okay, so for next week's board meeting, we have approval of the twenty-eighty agreement for sharing of mental health advocate costs with Winnebago and Worth County. We have approval of liquor license for River Road Gulf cleared. We have our audit report with the gardener and Thompson for the fiscal year twenty-one twenty-two audit, and I put copies of that audit on your desks. So you should have time to review it before next Tuesday. If you have any questions, Elizabeth will be here to go over it and help you a lot at that time. And we have approval of agreements with Snyder and Associates and McClear for County Inspector Services for car, carbon pipelines at nine thirty. So that's what's on the agenda so far for next week.
Do we have the new documents for that agreement yet?
No, she said she was gonna send it to me, but I have not seen them yet.
Yeah, just curious.
But I will make sure we have them to put in your packet or put in your work folder when that goes out on Friday.
That'd be great.
And then, um, so, we got a, we got a bill from Ayers and Cooney for, um, pipeline. And one of them has hours for navigator comments, and I know we, you guys voted not to have them represent us, so I wanted you guys to look at this bill and advise me if we need to contact them and advise them to take that off, or what your thoughts are on this bill. Because I, I thought we decided they weren't gonna represent us for that, so.
For the navigator one, but this may be related to the, um, the resul, or, the ordinance, there you go.
Okay, okay.
It's possible, so.
They, they were originally, um, included.
Right.
Okay.
So we, it probably would have been from before the change, but, do you remember the date on when we made that change?
I don't remember, but I could.
That would probably be the thing to look at.
I would say it was later January.
Yeah, I think so too.
Well, yeah, and this is three oh nine first.
Right.
Yeah.
That was before that.
Yeah, so I don't know, we, we might need to address that. Um, I would say we need to find the date on when we made that change.
Well, he's right, it was in January, but I'm, I'm gonna say that you're going to have to have a conversation with the attorney on what exactly. And if it didn't, if it applies all to navigator, then we shouldn't pay it.
No, cuz that's five.
My opinion, anybody else got a different one?
No.
No, I'd agree with that. Cuz he does have, um, attend ordinance matters, attend planning and zoning commission hearing on ordinance. Um, and that was earlier in its separate line item, but the navigator one.
Yeah, so I remember, um, seeing something in email from him about, uh, talking to navigator about some changes or something with the ordinance, uh, language and the ordinance or something to that. That he had worked with navigator on that, I'm not a hundred percent sure. Um, but I'm thinking it was pertaining to the ordinance and not, you know, directly to, you know, opposing navigator or whatever, and stuff, so. I think if we could talk to him and, and just kinda clarify that, and then we can.
I will clarify that with efficiency and then bring it back to you guys and see how you want it.
Of course.
Um, thank you, next thing. I had this, I had forwarded you this email. Back on March, in March, from Tim Whipple, but Ayers and Cooney actually, from his, from Elizabeth Burnett. And it talks about the planning and zoning meeting that was held on February seventh. It says the commissioner should make a report with findings and make a list referencing the specific changes they recommend regarding the ordinance. And it lists kind of an example of how you could change it. I was just wondering if you'd had a chance to look at that email and if that was something you wanted.
What was the subject line on that?
I didn't, what, what did it say?
It was Ayers' response to navigator.
Yeah.
I, I, I got it on March twenty-four. Or I sent it to you on March twenty-four.
March twenty-fourth, twelve o'clock four P M.
I just didn't wanna miss something.
Oh, I got it.
I know I read that. Um, and I believe that's what they are in the process of doing with planning and zoning.
Okay.
Because they were going over our report and stuff, um.
So we're okay then?
Well, they haven't heard that yet, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't know specifically if the planning and zoning commission has seen this document, I would imagine they have, but I have not asked that question, and Doug's obviously not here to answer it, but, um, it should be included in their report and recommendation to us. I would imagine so. Cuz the public health statement on page four, um, that was one thing that was discussed last night, that that, they did not believe that's happened yet. Is that correct, Jack? Cuz I know you talked about they were looking for more information for the public health board. Having done a statement on those. Yeah, so I thought that had happened, and they were talking about whether to take that out of the ordinance or not, but, um, they just kinda made a note about it to address that.
Appropriate for me to avoid this email to Doug, to make them aware of this. And if they haven't seen it in the past.
Right, it wouldn't hurt, um. I would imagine he's already gotten it from them, but it wouldn't hurt to check on that.
I just didn't wanna, something to fall through the cracks, so.
Yep.
Okay.
That's too long an email.
So that bill we got from, what was the date on that?
The what? That I sent it?
Yeah, twenty. The one, the bill that we got that you were questioning on the navigator.
When? The date said they, three nine and three ten?
And that's when, um, they sent their email, so that's probably related to that.
See, and, yeah, it did say for the ordinance on that, so.
So I suppose we're gonna end up paying it.
Yeah, it probably is.
Yeah.
Pay it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just didn't wanna be.
Yeah, they do correlate.
And they discussed that yesterday.
Okay, I just didn't wanna be paying something I should be paying.
Um, let's give the state a big round of applause for not addressing this issue and pushing it back on the counties. When they had a chance, they're not going to take it up.
He sent us not.
Yep, yep. Give them a round of applause when you see them for being chickens.
How did Rowley vote on that?
It didn't get to Rowley.
It didn't even get that far. Never got put on the docket.
Yep.
It didn't get out of the committees.
Oh, it didn't make the second funnel?
Nope, nope.
Okay.
It got stuck in the committees, which, you know, is really just stonewalling.
Who was on, which committee was that, do you remember?
Congress. I'm correct on that, aren't I, Carter?
I think so, I hear I have.
That's, oh, I.
Sorry for my sarcasm, but it just irritates me that they wanna take away rule from us, but then when they have a chance to do something, oh, well, the counties decide.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
But it doesn't matter which party's in control in Des Moines or in Washington, they're both about spineless buggers at times. My personal opinion, for the record.
Yep, you're entitled to it.
Cuz it would have made it a lot easier if they'd have made it.
Pretty much, but you know, now what's happened?
They just quit on you? Or everything go dark?
Yep.
Maybe they're, it's battery done, so. Just plug it in and turn it back on.
And it killed the battery?
Yep.
Eventually.
Yeah.
Oh, we can, will we do board reports, or do we have to wait?
No, go ahead, we've already lost the last.
Okay, so, Jack, anything, Carter's?
Yep, I had a care connections meeting last Tuesday. Um, over in Evansburg and Shores and, and had some updates from different, from affiliates. Um, they did in the past month hold a crisis intervention training here in Algonah, uh, for law enforcement officers. It's a forty hour trainer. That enables them to deal with mental health and, and crisis intervention related stuff, so. Um, they had around twelve, twelve or thirteen officers that attended that, so they were pleased with that and plan to do more in the future. Current, our current fund balance is two million nine hundred ninety-four thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars, eighty-five cents. Um, they're looking toward ways to spend that in coming year, so, um, if we have, you know, we have, uh, opportunities to best things we like done in that area. They have the money, so, um, we did approve for the mental health advocate twenty-eighty agreement, Cassuth Winnebago Board, and to be sent here, which we'll hold that, and, um,
Excellent.
Next week, yep, that's on the agenda, so, uh, we did review project requests. Um, we approved, uh, for the Palo Alto Hospital. We approved funding for a hundred ninety-nine employees to be trained and, uh, manned, the escalation training. It was a hundred and forty-four dollar person to do that. Approved four thousand dollars for very rich behavioral health, um, for transportation assistance. We approved over over twenty-five hundred dollars to the Play County Jail for a, uh, a safety chair in the, in the jail cell. Theirs was old and worn out, and they needed an updated one, so nobody got hurt. When an inmate is getting out of control, put him in the chair to restrain. Man, Hope Haven, um, we approved their, two thousand thirty-nine dollars for their youth work experience summer camp, um, for projector, food expenses, hygiene packs, and rear expo materials, is something they, it's their first camp that they've run through Hope Haven like this, and they'd like to make it an annual deal. So, so we'll probably see that again in the future. And we also had an update from Sandy Pelzer, our coordinator, all coordinators for this area, and, um, so she, she ran through statistics and things, and, uh, currently Iowa has a hundred and forty-four beds available for mental health patients, and just per capita, what we're supposed to be at is over double that, and, um, so we're, yeah, we're very much short on that.
Did they talk about the psychiatrist that's been there, Susan three gentlemen?
He's one of Megan's classmates.
Yeah, my classmate.
Who was that?
Peter Jordison.
Oh, I didn't realize Peter's psychiatrist.
Yeah.
Yeah, I decided, but.
Okay.
A R A C, I hope that's something that guys can talk about over there. I'll play guitar with Peter.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so that way he went into psych. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
That's what started it off.
Is there a correlation there, you know?
Maybe, to be determined. You're older than me, so maybe I'll get there. Um, and then, so I was all for Care Connections, and then, uh, also had planning and zoning meeting yesterday. Um, Kyle and myself were attending that, and they did approve a number of recommendations to bring to us, to the board, and, uh, there was a decent amount of public here. Wasn't, like, the first one, there were no public comments. Wasn't, like, the first one, there was no public comment made, but, uh, um, but yeah, so they got that figured out. We'll be reviewing those recommendations soon. I know they're going to have a meeting in two weeks. Two weeks from yesterday to officially approve that once Doug Miller puts together what they discussed, just to make sure everyone's on the same page on what they're sending over, so.
They're gonna publish.
Yeah, so there, there was, um, changes, a number of changes. They, they had, they had a big, big document or whatever. I don't know exactly how many pages it was. But the changes is what they, um, will wait to get that.
Right.
Actually put in writing and then sent back out so everyone can review and make sure it's in the correct form, and then they will vote on it in two weeks from today.
Vote to send it to us, yeah.
Yep.
Yep, yep. So, yep, had that and, um, and then also finally. I received a couple of calls in regards to the pit, Rockwood Pit's off the town, or near Rockwood Pit there, uh, with the, the one. The bad issues with smell and.
No, there.
And the D N R and all, E B A.
Did you, did you get the email that they are gonna go out and test?
Yep, and so that's, and I got the email right after I talked, I talked to the E B A, uh, regional lady and Candace, and she. Uh, yeah, she said they're gonna be testing April fourteenth or April eleventh or something like that, and, um. Yeah, and then it'll take thirty to forty-five days to get the result and a decision from the E B A to, um. To dispose of the waste, and we, whether it's has been hazardous or not, it, it has been, it's not, cannot be applied locally. As what she was saying, it won't, it won't be because of the Iowa Department of Agriculture's regulation, either way, it's gonna be trucked out, is what she said.
Who's gonna pay for that?
I don't know, but that's.
Not us.
They'll probably expect us to. But, uh.
No, definitely not.
But, uh, so that's what the E B A said, and I talked to Chris, and yeah, that's who gave me the number for the E B A, so hopefully we can. I, I did a couple of presidents down that way were interested in if it goes much longer and taking legal action. I did, um, speak with them on that, but I said, well, let's see how this phase goes. But, you know, and if they're still not doing anything that, and we're still having issues, then yeah, we need to.
The sad, the sad but honest truth is if they took legal action, they wouldn't have a result for a year or two.
And that's, that'd just delay it all the more, but hopefully they get things figured out. Soon.
I hope so, cuz it's been a long process.
I know, I know, give me two years this summer, so. But that's all I got.
Mr. Wacker?
I didn't have anything last week, um, but tomorrow we do have a CEO networking for, um, Cassouche, uh. Economic Development over the lunch hour, um, I was gonna talk to you, Kyle, about that, if you were, if you wanted to go to that or.
Okay, I think it's something on my calendar, I don't remember if that's. Have it written on here, but I, I knew I had something for tomorrow.
I also got an invite from. Some, I can't remember. Nancy Born.
Nancy Born.
Yeah, yep, yep. Uh, that's, yeah, that's at the same, roughly the same time noon to two, so. Kinda conflicting, so I'm not sure which one I wanna go to, so that's why I was curious if who'd be available for the CEO of Networking one.
Yeah, I can, we can talk after this and figure out.
Yeah, but other than that, um, nothing else.
Come.
Um, EMS meeting tonight, obviously we talked a bunch of that stuff here earlier, but. I think I had anything else besides that. We already talked on the, um, meeting here last night for planning and zoning, so. Should cover my updates.
On vacation, no?
For now.
For this week anyways.
For this week?
For this week, yeah.
I didn't have anything last week, so, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Stecker, second by Carter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried.
Hand me that, um, Oliver's response, they've got comments on there. Do you know if I print that out, will the comments be? In there? That word, document from Oliver's.
It should be on.
I was.
If you're in that moment, it should.
Yeah, I was thinking so, but.
You go out of them, it won't, but.
Well, let's try and find out.
Forget the timing, let it sprout.
Well, yeah, I just see a problem.
What?
Letter you gave.
Yeah, it's from the auditing firm. Every year, we have to answer those questions.
I, I have a transfer receipt of income, correct? Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be, that'd be my only one then.
Yeah, you wouldn't, you mean, income you don't have to put on there. This is just related parties, so just like if you do a service for Cassouche County and are getting paid for it, that's what it's.
Oh, like if you contacted them or something?
Yeah, or if you know of anybody that.